Right now.
Okay, thank you. Motion to follow the Chief of Police Danielle Means contract for suspension of pay with Rama funds.
Hey, motion by Councilwoman Halverson, second by Councilman Wilson, or, wait, sorry, Councilman Weston, Councilman Dreamer. Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask the motion maker if you would say pending completion of the investigation process?
Pending investigation completion process.
Pending, yeah, completion of the investigation process.
Yes, thank you for that.
Okay, Secretary, call for a vote.
James Cross. Richard Greenwall Senior. Craig Dillon. David Kelly.
Abstain.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jeremy Rosales.
Abstain.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Donroy Ghostbear.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. Blaine Little Thunder.
Good.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
B. Frandl. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Abstain.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Abstain.
While yes for no, for not, or while yes for abstained, for not voting, motion carried. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, and I'm going to turn it over to the Secretary.
Thank you. First, um, under my agenda, I have tribal council minutes for July 29th, 30th, and 31st. Second.
Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman, Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston. Call for the vote.
James Cross.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Donroy Ghostbear.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. Blaine Little Thunder.
Good.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
B. Frandl. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Council. The next item under my agenda is the Executive Board minutes for July 2nd, 16th, and 23rd.
Go ahead.
Stacy, is that in a separate meeting? I mean, a separate email, correction?
No, it's actually on the same email, you would go further down the, um, the packet that was sent to you. I usually have my records department do the packets, they get together, and, um, as I explained last council meeting, they started to do a table of contents at the beginning of the, um, packet so that you can refer or use it as reference to find information, and, um, it would be a forward from Byron. I don't have that email. Byron just now resented to you, Julian. I believe, um, my colleagues don't have it either. And also, you should be receiving an email from each of my data texts. After they finish the day that they're assigned to, they attach the minutes with all their documents, and they send it to all Executive Board and Tribal Council. So you might be getting a separate email, um, just like within days after the council meeting. That includes all of the resolutions and ordinances that were passed from that day. So that is also be, is sent to you too, from each of my, um, data texts.
Stacy, on the resolutions, Resolutions 25 dash 141A, that would be taken out of there, right?
That would still be a part of the permanent record, however, um, the records will reference that it was rescinded.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilman Littlewoman, second by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Call for a vote.
James Cross.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Donroy Ghostbear.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. Blaine Little Thunder.
Good.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
B. Frandl. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Seventeen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Council, my final, um, item under my agenda is, uh, had my staff send out or give you copies of a updated flag list. This list contains over 327 unclaimed flags still within the, my office. And so I wanted to see if you could possibly go through them, and if you know the names, are they from your districts? Maybe, uh, notify Ashley, um, in my mailroom, she's in charge of the flags. Um, Ashley, wave your hand in case they don't know. But if you can, um, if you can contact Ashley or give her your list, then she could collect those flags and send them back to the districts with you. But like I said, we have over 327 unclaimed tribal flags. And this has been going on, um, ongoing for several years now. And so, um, we would like to return those or get those to the families. So if you can, um, work with my office and work with Ashley on them. Um, and also, just for this year alone, um, this doesn't include, um, the unclaimed ones, but for since about January, we've had over 300 flag requests. And that is from anywhere from honoring to death. And so, um, we're in the process of getting those done. However, I only had one flag maker since January. Um, the previous one, I, I believe she got burned out from it. She was constantly doing our flags and she just quit. And so I managed to find somebody, um, earlier in the year, but however, she only works on them on weekends. And so we're really behind on these flags that we get, the requests. And, um, I did finally get somebody else who's going backwards from 2000, um, or 2021, and starting on those ones that are missing, but, um, I wanted to bring something up to Council. I don't know exactly what administration it changed, but, um, everybody gets a flag nowadays. Everybody, regardless of your tri, I mean, um, representative. But I remember, um, back when tribal flags are first started, you got them if you serviced the tribe, if you put in years of service to the tribe, or you were a veteran, or you were a community person. And I believe that changed to where everybody was able to get a flag. And so, um, that is the reason why we're behind. Because we have on average, probably anywhere from five to seven, um, flag requests a week. And we just don't have the flag makers available to keep up with the amount of flag requests we get. But, um, I wanted to bring that up to Council and remind them that to have a flag was, um, you know, an honorable thing, and we always used to give them to people who, who like past council members or, uh, veterans who had passed away. And we were able to stay on top of those, but now, since it's, um, everybody gets a flag when they pass, um, we've been making modifications to try and keep up with the demand of them. And so I just wanted to bring that attention to, uh, the Council and let them know. But if you can sure, uh, assist my office with all of these unclaimed flags, then we could return them to the families. And I just want the public to know too, that we are really trying hard to stay on top of the request. We do have two flag makers now. One is going to be, um, doing the past ones to date. The current one is going to be doing the current ones, um, as best as they can. But like I said, we're still really, really behind. And there's many years since 2021. There's been a lot of, um, trying to catch up, trying, because there was a time there, uh, about two years ago, we didn't have a flag maker at all, but we were collecting tribal flag requests for, and, you know, trying to get somebody to onboard. And I've always encouraged, I've been advertised, uh, to have an additional flag maker. However, it's very difficult for people to come up with, um, startup funds for, to be able to do them. And so, um, we haven't really had a lot of interest in them too. But right now, we have two, and we're doing our best to stay on top of our requests. So I just wanted to convey that to the Council. And if you can, um, the, the form, the paper I just handed out, if you could put your name on it and then circle the ones that you know, and then, um, just if you can't do it today, then drop it off at the mailroom, and then we could start working on getting those flags together. So that's all I wanted to bring up regarding that, and just thank you for your help on this.
Okay, well, thank you for that information, there, Secretary.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Secretary, is there a phone number that they can contact or they can call to schedule a pickup?
Yes, they can call Ashley in our OST mailroom, and her phone number is 605-867-8436. And also, if they can, you know, they can contact any of the council reps soon, you can convey any, um, messages we have. I also, um, have been receiving inquiries through my email, and my email is stacytl@oglala.org, and that's Stacy, S-T-A-C-Y-T-L at oglala.org.
Thank you for that. I know, um, I've gotten a couple of messages that we're, we're going in and out on Keely Radio, so just wanted to make you aware.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item, there's a comptroller, is he still here? There he is, okay. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Patton here.
Good afternoon, Tribal Council. So again, I'm here to provide, uh, my comptroller's report, recorded at the ordinance 2506. What I, my report this month is going to basically be on the three items that I have on my letterhead. One is the 2022 audit. Uh, we are continuing with the accounts reconciliations for 2022 with the tribe audit firm Baker Tilly. Accountants also are reconciling the 23 accounts. So basically what that means is when, once we get the trial balances, uh, reconciled and over to Whitley, the auditors, we'll move right into our 23 account reconciliations, which shouldn't take that long to complete. Um, also, what I have on my, as an attachment to this, what is very important is I did a letter previously to the Treasurer on August 21st, 2025. I did have a Zoom meeting with our pre-audit firm Baker Tilly. One of my biggest concerns about this was why I wrote the letter, why, is you also have attachment for OLT LLC who receive money's grants on behalf of the tribe. The grant, the Ogallala Sioux Tribe is the grantee. By being the grantee, we are responsible for the reporting of those grants, and that's an attachment to my letter. I did visit with Baker Tilly on our Zoom meeting today, and yes, confirmed it that I always thought that we need it to anyway. They need to be as a part of our 2022 audit, um, basically because we're the grantee. So on August 21st, I did a letter to the Treasurer, um, and it is, I'll read it. Attaches the funding received by the tribe related to the OLT LLC. The tribe is currently preparing the 22 audit. The auditors will most likely consider this a major program and require the tribe to provide documents for compliance testing. This is primarily due to the tribe is the grantee of the funds awarded and is required to ensure compliance. Currently, the tribe has no accounting records to provide to our pre-audit firm to prepare financial statements. This is due to the OLT LLC operating independently from the tribe's management system. And this was based on my research, there was ordinances that allowed OLT to operate outside of our system as a standalone business, basically. But the grantee, the grant is in the tribe's name. Based on the information provided, it's crucial that the tribe conducts a compliance review to ensure accounting records are available. The, the OST Treasurer shouldn't assign a compliance review team to begin immediately. The compliance review team will conduct a review and issue any compliance findings to the OST Treasurer. The, the review will include the following, and the following is basically what's required in a management system for counting for grant funds. Um, accounting records, bank reconciliations, bank statements, budget revenue expenditure reports, check copies and support documentation, and any, I mean, contract agreements. Um, personnel records, payroll check registers, timesheet copies, job descriptions, appointment letters, management manuals, financial policies and procedures, personnel policies and procedures, property procurement policies and procedures. I recommend the Economic Business and Development Committee consider this important matter and approve the compliance review. The reason I put Economic Business and Development Committee, based on the ordinance, the committee is OLT LLC's board. Um, I read the ordinance at the time when this was established. OLT was supposed to go out and provide, or I guess, get your own 501(c)(3), get your own board so they could operate, but from my understanding, this has never been completed. So that's why Economic Development Committee has always been their board, and that is pretty much stated in the ordinance. So with that, I mean, the tribe is responsible for these funds. What I'm trying to do is limit any disallowed costs from OLT LLC that we're not aware of. We need these documents, we need your financial statements to, for the best interest of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Um, and if you look on the sheet that has, the start date was 8/1/2022, this is the audit period we're in now. So I can't stress it enough that we need these documents. I don't want to get this, we don't want to get in a situation where we have question costs that's going to turn into disallowed costs.
I have a question. Dean. Good afternoon. Last, uh, week, Friday, we took action through EB&amp;D to have Toni, uh, release all those documents that you just mentioned to Cora, the Treasurer. So she does know that, uh, she has to release the statements and everything else you had listed on here to, uh, her, and then what you said about the EB&amp;D being the board, I think today there's a resolution under EB&amp;D that if that passes, there'll be a board. And then the, then the EB&amp;D will step back, right? James?
Yeah.
So there'll be a board after that.
Thank you for that. Um, with the compliance review team, you know, I think it's important that if, if it's allowed, Cora establishes a team of three or four to actually go out to OLT LLC and look in their files, see what they have at their office. Um, and that will, that would mean a lot if that would happen. Instead of bringing, uh, balance sheet or any type of statement, we need to see what documents are out there, like, like I mentioned in the letter. Um, that's what happens with us, the tribe, um, but we need to know. Because when the auditors start asking for information, Baker Tilly, I had a Zoom meeting with them this afternoon before I came, and yes, they confirmed that, yes, we need that information. So, um, that's why I thought it was important to attach this to my report today, to let the Tribal Council know um, how important it is. Um, so that's that part of it. So back to the other parts of my report, um, the indirect cost. Any more questions on the audit part of it?
I do.
Go ahead.
You're, um, you're just now finishing up reconciling the, or, the 2022 audit. You said that will be done by December, right? So, um, the accountants also are reconciling the 2023 accounts. So my question is, I was reviewing all of that, the reports you've been giving us, and, uh, let's say January comes around, it looks like we're going to still be three years behind. So you probably know that, right?
Yes, I'm well aware of that.
And so I don't want to throw the question out, but I think I asked you that question before. That, um, what we're currently on, we might be, be still on that in January. That was just my question to you on that.
Okay.
We'll still be unsanctioned, because we're going to still be three years behind.
Yes, we will still be three years behind, and I think I mentioned that last time also, that what we want to do, our reconciliation, reconcile 2023 now, so when we get our, I guess, our reconciliations done with Baker Tilly and they get over to the auditors, that will give them the opportunity to start reconc, getting our financial statements together for 23, so. it won't drag out for middle of next year. We want to push it hard to get it earlier. That's why we're getting this reconciled also. But with Baker Tilly, in our conference call, we're a lot more ahead than we have been in 2120 or 2021, which is, which is real good. Um, so they thought maybe about another month, they should have our financial statements over to the auditors. Once they get that, then that's when the testing become, that's when that starts. It's all in the auditor's hands after that.
So the other part of my question is, you talked about OLT. Does the auditors come in and go in there and they're the ones that look at those documents?
Yes, they actually send me emails of, and based on our general ledgers, checks that go out for all of our programs, the major programs that get a lot of funding, they will come back, send me an email and say, I need all these documents. And last audit with the ARPA dollars, they tested probably 60% of the ARPA funds. Um, there was a lot of testing going on. And I know at the time, the auditor said it's a requirement that they test more ARPA, a lot more documents. So like I mentioned, I'm sure they're gonna want to see the general ledger's financial statements on OLT so they could start testing documents. So that's my huge concern right now, that we need to get a review team in there so we can see what is there for us, for the tribe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One more question, Councilwoman Spotted Bear, and then Councilman Pooier.
Thank you, Chair, our president. Dean, I know we spoke last week regarding the pre-audits. I know we spoke briefly in regards to running the audit simultaneously and the issue with finding funding, funding, running audits simultaneously. However, we did speak about doing the pre-audit to the following year. Were you able to speak with Baker Tilly in regards to doing a pre-audit to, I guess, jumpstart the audit, to move that along, move that following year along, I guess, more swiftly per se? I know we don't want to rush audits, however, to get that moving along, to get the flow moving on our audits.
So yes, as I mentioned earlier, yes, I did bring that up to Baker Tilly during our Zoom meeting today. And once our 22 financials are complete, they could start looking at the 23 account reconciliations that we are currently doing internally. Um, so when I mentioned that to Baker Tilly, yes, that will help, but we still need to finish the 22 to get the numbers from that. But they were happy to hear that, yes, we are moving along, got a lot done for '23 already. So it shouldn't take them as long to reconcile that financial statement. So yes, I did bring it up today.
Thank you. That's all I have for the audits.
Councilman Pooier.
I guess my question is going to OLT. And I don't know how many times we took action in EB&amp;D to have them give them records to the tribe, and it never did happen. So what's our next step? What if they don't comply with this? It puts us in a situation where, because when, I think it was in, in the spring, then and back in July, I think it was, we told them we wanted that, those things, and it never happened. So if they don't listen, because I think James and Jeremy was even supposed to go to the bank with them, they're supposed to give them those records, that didn't happen. So if they don't listen, what? We just say, well, thank you and go on, or what, what do we do? That's my question.
And that would be bad for the tribe. I mean, bottom line, and like you said, I know we're trying to get records for some time now, but, um, they never did work with us, I guess. That's why I did the letter to EB&amp;D as the board to get permission to go in there as a team and do this review, to see what's there. Um, because I don't want to be in a situation where the auditors ask for information, I have nothing to give them. And then we know they've been spending a lot of money.
That's what I'm asking, because if they don't give it, then we're held responsible for that, was it 35 million that we first got for that? Or it might even be more money than that, but they gotta listen to somebody, I guess, put it that way. And now they got a board, I don't know if they, hopefully listen to the board or either something, something drastic has to happen shortly.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Council.
I mean, we, we are planning to, um, orientation or transfer the board to board. And I think this will maybe be a discussion item at that time to, to address this issue with gathering documentation that's needed for this audit. So when that time comes, well, maybe that'll be one of our priority discussions to, to bring that, make sure that, that, of information that you need is given to them, given to you and to the audit, Baker Tilly. Because I'm not sure if they have a management firm, firm onboard that's contracted, who's tweened it for them, so, so they can provide the information to us. But I, I don't know if they do or if they don't. Um, but again, I want to stress, this is extremely important.
Okay, I think we're good. We can continue.
Moving on, indirect cost. Nothing has changed since my last report on indirect cost on the reduced hours. What actually changed is we were supposed to receive our BIA IDC once our audit was submitted. We have been looking in our ASAP system, which we draw funds from. Nothing has been uploaded. I just received four contracts Friday where the BIA approved a first distribution of IDC, um, last Friday. What, nothing has been uploaded into our ASAP system. We did the calculations, I know Cora's gonna hit on it more. The IDC we received for those four grants, we did the calculations, and there was a shortfall already. From January to now, we did the calculations, what they gave us was not enough to cover our expenses for that period, which is, and I, I mean, yeah. And I let Cora know yesterday, I said, we cannot keep operating like this. We need our 4.2 million from BIA so we could collect what is owed to us. So, um, but I'm continuing to check my emails, continue to check ASAP to see when our, all of our 4.2 million dollars is gonna be uploaded in IDC into, so we could draw it down for the BIA. Um, so yes, I need to throw that out there, that we're still behind in collections. In the report here, we did submit our 2019, 2020 final IDC proposals. We negotiated our 19 and 20. The biggest change on that negotiations, and we couldn't get it through the Interior Business Center, is our HHS secretary is gonna be now charged 50% IDC, 50% general. We argued that case, but we lost. So we thought, instead of just sticking to this, let's go ahead and agree to that and move forward for future negotiations. So we're trying to renegotiate for the upcoming years. I don't know why, I mean, I got the email, I couldn't, I mean, there was something about that negotiations, but our thing was, why are you doing that to HHS secretary and not the other ones? What it's coming down to, we probably need to revise our job descriptions and just put secretary on there and not put the committee. So that's something we also need to look at. Um, we're also submitted our 21, 22, and 23 provisional IDC proposals, and the 2024 proposal is being prepared and will be submitted. So just based on this information, the tribe has made a huge movement in our IDC agreements, which is real good. Last week, Jackie was there, visited with Mr. Davis, asked him if he was gonna, the IHS was considering also sanctioning tribes. The tribe informed me, no, they're not gonna, they're not looking at that, um, due to the fact that they know the tribe is working hard to get this stuff done. But he said, no. I said, can I take that and inform the council? He said, yes. I said, okay, I'm gonna do that, so don't make me look bad. So they're not gonna sanction us with our Master Health contract dollars, Rapid City and Pine Ridge, which is good. Um, so yes, also the BIA is in the process of providing indirect cost modifications to the tribe on their distribution process. That's what I just mentioned. Um, I don't know whether other distribution process is gonna happen, but we're, we already have a shortfall from the BIA. Um, I know the treasurer has a calculation on one of, on one of our programs, so I'll let her address that when it gets there. Um, any questions on indirect cost?
One over here. Go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, Dean, we gotta keep in mind too that the money that we were expecting was at a higher rate on the indirect cost. But now, since you guys had the negotiations and it brought the rate down lower, we're only gonna get reimbursed on a, what, 33 point?
36.5.
Yeah. That's all we're gonna get back. We're not gonna get that full, yeah, 43%.
So based on that, I asked Mr. Davis the same question. So I did mention to him, I said, you know what, IHS funded our FY County and CY 25 IDC to 43.04%. I said, so I'm gonna go in and keep collecting at that rate. I'm not gonna use this rate here. He was fine with that at the time. So I said, okay, I'm just letting you know, that's what I'm gonna collect on. Um, but right now, what's happening with the Department of Justice, we responded to them, they're also in the process of withholding indirect costs, which is not a lot, because we're getting this such small grant from DOJ. So we're waiting for response back from them. So yes, he also confirmed that, yes, Dean, you could, you could charge us at that 43.04%. Tell the new FY 26 mods come out, our funding agreements, then they'll probably go lower.
So with the BIA though, they're gonna continue at the, the lower rate that you guys negotiated?
Yes, we're gonna continue at that. And when I did the budget to reduce the hours, I used that rate, the 4 point some million.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, President. Uh, and this is not a question, just a, a comment to your concern last week, speaking with the treasurer and finance committee. One of the concerns was the drawdown for the IDC. Um, the treasurer did address that concern with the IDC funding. So we did reach out to the BIA superintendent, and she said that they were still working on the IDC, and that's why it was not available for drawdown. So I'm not sure how long the process is for that. I was hoping that she was here, that's why I was looking around, but I don't see the superintendent here. And maybe when it comes time for her report, that's something that we need to ask her when she is present.
So like I mentioned, we just got the contract modification for BIA, four of them, putting IDC, giving IDC to the tribe, a first distribution, which was not at the rate that was negotiated with them. Um, was it 27%, I can't remember. Anyway, so, bottom line, they still owe us some IDC.
Right. And she did, uh, she does come to our finance meetings now, so she did report to us that there was a slight increase. It wasn't much at all, but that's what she did report.
Question.
Sorry.
Yeah. Um, Dean, according to that last, uh, letter that was received from the tribe, I think the rate was lower. I think, yeah, 29.72%. And we're only gonna get 33% of that.
So that's what we're gonna get in indirect cost, 29.721424790. That's how far they broke it down. So on what we're gonna receive, the direct contract support dollars, that's different than indirect cost. The direct contract support dollars, they're gonna only award us 33.3% of that until our audits are updated. So that does not affect the IDC, according to the letter that I have here, that May, whatever letter, May 27th. So that only affects our direct contract support dollars. Um, that usually, those funds usually offset our fringe benefit costs and some other costs within the contract. So we can't use it for salaries. Um, there's a few other things we can't use it for, but we could use it for indirect cost, I mean, fringe benefits. Any more questions to direct cost?
I do, but I think when BIA gets here, we can kind of ask those too.
Councilman Gosber.
Thank you, Chair. Dean, I just got a question. In December, I'm, so only touched on it, I just want to know, are we gonna look at taking another cut in December? Because we're still gonna be behind.
Yeah, and I, I know I mentioned that around October, late October, November, early November, I'll, I'll do the review, take another look at it, and bring it back to finance, to let finance know exactly where we're standing.
So probably go over that, what, in the next couple of months again?
Yeah, uh-huh. Because like I said, we haven't been collecting anything that's gonna drastically change where we're at now.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Chair.
IDC questions?
Motion to approve Dean's report.
One more question here.
One more question for you, Dean. 425s. And I know Mr. Long isn't here, and we usually get a report from the BIA on the, how much they approved and how much got set back. We don't have that front of us. But how is those coming along? I know you put a little paragraph in here, but is those getting done?
Yes, they are. I mean, and we've been working with the staff, been working with Valentina. She has been accepting a lot of them, and there's some that she's turning out back for little adjustments, um, that the accountants are, will do and send back to them. But the question, I mean, the other question that I have, I guess, from the president or whatever, we request that technical assistance from, from the BIA to assist on these 425s for us and the BIA, who was requesting this Diane from Rosebud. I don't know if the letter went out on that request, that technical assistance request.
I believe we're addressing that now, so, should be out there, so.
And I think that we, technical assistance will help both sides to better understand what needs to be on there and what, what doesn't, I mean, so, yeah, once we get that, but we, yes, we are submitting. Um, I do get the emails back from Valentina on the ones that I've, that are accepted. Um, the ones that come back that are not accepted, I email them to the accountant, they get back in contact with Valentina. So yes, the communication is there, and it has been there on the 425s.
Okay, so we had a motion, uh, one more question? Go ahead.
Dean, this ain't related to like, uh, audits, indirect cost, or your 425s, but this one is related to, last week, I got a text, I actually got a few of them. EAP is underneath you, right, Dean?
Yes.
So why did you let him go to Rappit when we clearly made a motion in finance and ordinance not allowing any programs to go off reservation for travel? Um, what is this one, Best Western Round Coda, EAP staff development, and stuff like this, Dean? And my concern is, Dean, is that, I'm just bringing it to you, because people ask me these questions, and I gotta ask you. And you clearly know that we shouldn't be doing this, and you put us in a situation to ask you this, and you opened up to, for us to scrutinize you, Dean. And my finance chair is, Chair, finance chair, we, we clearly said no off reservation travel, right? Or for the programings, for stuff in Rappit?
Correct. That was my question. However, I was under the impression that there was a council- there was a council meeting that that was lifted and I had questioned that, uh, previously. Was the travel ban lifted or was it, is it still in place? And that's still my question.
And, and it's just like, you know, if we're gonna allow it, then let's just lift it for other people, for other programs to do it. Because I don't wanna be getting into this back and forth and scrutinizing, Dean, and, and me out to be the bad guy. If we're gonna allow it, then let's just lift it. But don't be letting certain programs do it. Because, Dean, this is like the second or third time they let. And, and my question to you is, are, are you letting them? Are they just, are they disobeying your authority, Dean? Are you letting them go or are you disobeying you?
I mean, I definitely could respond to that on the travel ordinance itself, the ban or whatever. If you look at the travel ordinance, there is situations, staff development, there's about three other things in that ordinance. If they comply with that, with that language, and I know the secretary's office always did that, did that. With that type of language in there, staff development, it's allowable under that ordinance. That ordinance, the language needs to be changed in that travel, that ordinance that you're discussing. So, yes, I mean, I did approve that based on the language of the ordinance, staff development. So we need to take another look at that ordinance and tighten it up. Take stuff out of there that, the language, because if it hasn't in there, it's allowable according to ordinance.
Is that true, finance chair?
So I don't, I don't believe so. And I guess, Stacey. So it was no travel and that was specifically stated in there that there was no travel. And the only individuals who, who were allowed to travel were the program directors. And that was for, um, to respond to the either training or training requirements. And then they had to seek approval through their, their, um, their, their chain of command.
Again, when I looked at the ordinance with the language in there, it complied with that ordinance. So and I've been talking with the chief of staff also over all this for the last two months. That ordinance needs to change. It needs to be rewarded.
And so my, that's why I went to the treasurer and I had asked, did they change the ordinance again to remove, to lift that travel ban? Because I was confused because I, that was a concern that was brought to my attention. Uh, because the last, the last guidance that we passed was no travel. And that was a funding issue that we were trying to preserve funding.
And if there was a new ordinance that superseded that one, I haven't seen it, but that's the one I reviewed on several occasions.
Secretary has the ordinance right here.
Okay, um, Byron emailed and get out to you. But, um, ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-five, page two. And the second or the first be it further ordained that OST travel programs located on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation are limited to conducting program meetings within the boundaries of the reservation with exceptions made for funding agency requirements. Or as may be required to carry out program objectives that may include but not is limited, but is not limited to such things as grants, applications, awards and management, staff training, program collaborations and government consultations. That was approved on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And I just had Byron email it to you. It has not been changed or rescinded.
And, um, okay, thank you, Stacey Serena. And, uh, and that's fine, you know, I mean, that, that's fine. But for the rest of the programs, I think we should just rescind that ordinance to let everybody do it. Because I don't wanna get into this with you anymore, Dean. I mean, let's just lift it, let everybody travel. Because I'm not seeing no savings right now. I, I didn't see nothing of black and white in front of me, what we're saving. So I don't wanna let other programs get mad and be right here again asking either, Dean. So I think I'm just gonna make a motion to rescind that, Chair.
Good. We have a motion.
Well, I know, I know we gotta do the ordinance to rescind that ordinance too, so.
Councilman Lowder.
No, Chair, I was just gonna say, um, you know, if anything, if Covey's gonna make that motion, then okay, but there's a motion on the floor and let's just keep it rolling here.
And, and you know, Chair, I just wanna make that motion because I don't want, I just don't want this to happen again.
I'm gonna call a point of order. That's not on the agenda.
So we're gonna run a motion here. We, we have a motion on the floor to accept the comptroller's report, so we're gonna run that one. Motion by Councilman Dylan, second. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Little Thunder? Call for the vote.
James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. David Kelly.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Don Regosper.
This is on Dean's report.
On the comptroller's report.
Yeah.
Jackie Sears. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
B. Frando.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, three no. Motion carried.
Thank you, tribal council.
Okay, uh, is the treasurer still here?
Sorry, she left.
Oh, there she is, hiding in a corner. At this time, I'll turn it over to treasurer.
Um, I had them pass out your reports earlier. I don't know if I'm supposed to email them or if I'm supposed to pass them out, but this morning they said bring copies, so I brought copies. First, I have a letter. Ogallisou tribal council, we have been working diligently in, in the treasurer's office and FAO in spite of our reduced hours. Many of us are still working more than forty as required. First, in your packet, I have included the following information. The first little packet has the bank balances. Right behind that is a Native American bank statement with the balances. I, I had them do it on a running balance, so you know what, how much is left in there. And then I have the Edward Jones July report and the Edward Jones quarterly report. So that way you have those to review. I also included the general fund report, the budget summary and the resource office report was also distributed. Um, the finance committee requested the last three months of bank statements for every account at First National. So we're working on pooling all of those. They'll be distributed at the finance meeting on Thursday. Um, I didn't include the check copies with the Native American bank statement. But I did have them reformat on the website so that the checks were the last few months with the running balance. So you can see where you are in this account. The deposit is pending right now, so it's not listed on the report yet. But it will be for next month. And, um, honestly, I, I think that spending besides the football thing, uh, out of the marijuana account needs to stop or be halted for a while because that was a lot of money to spend in a short period of time. Um, the Edward Jones report includes the July monthly and the quarterly report. Um, John, Tony and I were working with the auditors and we discovered that there is an account at the Edward Jones office in Rapid City. So we are working with them. I have a meeting with them tomorrow to transfer everything into one account. Um, and that will be with the account in California because that one is more active than the one in Rapid City. Um, the resource office report is attached. The FAO staff are working diligently on reporting through four-twenty-fives. They're doing the audit prep, the suspense lists. Um, so we can start the twenty-twenty-two audit as soon as the entries are made. They're working on getting the trial balance. Um, I also have, that I didn't pass out, the Whitley twenty-twenty-three audit engagement, because we're moving along so fast as Dean reported that, um, we had them do the audit engagement letter sooner rather than later. So after they start doing, pulling the samples, we'll already be ready for twenty-twenty-three. Because they're moving faster than we expected. So, um, I can bring that to finance committee because I didn't pass it out here. Unless you guys wanna approve it here, it's up to you guys totally. But I can take it back to finance on Thursday. Um, I've been working with Jen, Joel Williams and Elizabeth, I can't remember her last name, from Hobbs Strauss on the FSA write-down. We, um, haven't had a physical meeting yet, but we've had a few, um, Zoom meetings. And right now, there was concerns about the treasury offsets. And after that meeting, um, the, after the last meeting, Joel sent out a letter and I'm gonna be bringing that to finance for your review as well. Because he sent out a letter that the FSA has stated that they will, they will pull back any offsets right now until we're completed with our, with the process of the write-down. Which is good news. Um, I, I do have a concern about IDC from BIA. At the finance meeting, Valentina stated she would be releasing four point three million dollars within a few days. That's been about two weeks. And then they did release on a couple of contracts. So I was reviewing those contracts with Dean and, and I was asking him a thousand questions. Because in the May twenty-seventh letter, they said that they would be releasing thirty-three percent of the contract support funds or the direct contract support costs. And that they were unable to re, and, release indirect costs until a rate was negotiated between Ogallisou tribe and the Bureau of Indian Affairs. The rate was negotiated. But instead of releasing the full amounts, they're releasing thirty-three percent of the indirect cost and thirty-three percent of the direct contract support dollars. So rather than getting sixty-two thousand like we're supposed to on this contract, they're releasing thirty-two. Twenty-one of that is indirect cost and it was supposed to be sixty-four thousand for indirect cost. So we have to find some way to deal with that. And I don't know if we need to talk to BIA or who we need to talk to in BIA because apparently I guess we're not communicating right. Because they tell us one thing and then do something else. But I think that needs to be questioned. I mean, we're jumping through all these hoops. And then instead of doing what they say they're going to do, they give us more hoops to jump through and less to work with. And that's not right. They're supposed to be helping us. They're supposed to be working to help us to get things done. But instead of helping us, they make things harder. And I don't know who we're supposed to talk to about that, but whatever. But I think that was all. On the, the IDC thing just is really frustrating because we've done everything they've asked. And they know that our audits are going to take time. And actually, what audit is due now is twenty-twenty-four. We finished twenty-twenty-one. That brings us within three years. When we're finished with twenty-twenty-two, we'll still, we'll be within two years. But twenty-twenty-five will end and then we'll, by September, we're going to be, they're going to say, well, it's three years now, even though we're closer than we were for the past five years. So do you have any questions?
Councilwoman Sears. I remember back in July or somewhere around there that we did get a letter from BIA or, um, stating that, um, what, what was gonna happen. And I think it was, it was explained that, um, the IDC is gonna come off the, just, it's just off the salary and fringe, right?
That, that's what it always is.
Yeah.
It's always just salary and fringe. That was in May when we got that letter.
Yeah. And I think, um, there was also, uh, an agreement because we were supposed to have that done like the end of May, thirty-first. But they extended it. The tribe wanted it extended for two more months.
Yeah.
So I think, um, based on that, I think that from my understanding was only thirty-three percent was going to be paid out acco, according to that rate. That, you know, when we negotiated, actually that rate, rate went down, so we're not getting that much.
There, the thirty-three percent of what I'm talking about is thirty-three percent of that thirty-three percent. So instead of giving the, us the full thirty-three percent, it's like they're giving us eleven percent to work with. Because it's only a third. So in, in the chart they gave us, they said they would be giving us one hundred percent IDC and thirty-three percent direct contract support cost. But now they're giving us thirty-three percent IDC and thirty-three percent direct contract support cost. Which is only a third of what we're supposed to be operating on. So, and then in that finance meeting when she said we'll be releasing that four point three in a few days, I don't understand what a few days are because it's been two weeks now and we haven't received anything. But when I address them, then I'm the bad guy. So someone else needs to address them.
Go ahead.
So when BIA does get here tomorrow, because they'll be doing their report, will you be available to be here?
If you want me to be here, I'll be here.
I think you should and we should hear it from both sides. Yeah.
Yeah, because I've read all their letters. Everything that they send to me, I read.
Okay.
And everything they send to me isn't what they say at the meetings.
Councilman Poyer.
Steve, are you listening to what's going on?
So, okay.
All right. So is there a case for a lawsuit against the Bureau? I'm just getting tired of them jacking us around all the time.
I don't know. I, I mean, I can visit with the treasurer about it, but I I don't know about it in a firm.
I think avenues need to be taken to do something because it's just getting old now. Every time it's something different that what they're pulling on us. It's even happening in our land leases. I mean, it's just get, it's tiresome.
And speaking of land leases, um, President, we have a letter for you to sign. It's in your email regarding the administrative fees for, from nine, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. Because we have not received them. We've been working on this for a few years. And, um, they don't, they keep claiming they don't know where the money is either. So there needs to be some resolution to that because we've had to support the land operations forever.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, you know, Cora, I'm just looking at the, uh, bank statements, I guess, the I know we said we wanna see an actual bank statement, not on white paper. But I'm just gonna say that, um, what you gave us today, I'm gonna go ahead and just What you gave us today, I'm going to go ahead and just comment on some of these accounts. And I am concerned about the indirect cost account. You know, Dean talked about it earlier. We're minus in there. You know, we're minus in that account. And if we don't get that money that uh, we should, you say we should be getting the right amount according to the indirect cost. You know, this is going to go up. This minus is going to continue to go up and up. That only pays not only this council's partial salary, but it also pays all the uh, indirect cost employees. Within the tribe. And so. I don't know how much longer that we can uh. Carry that and how are we going to um, uh. Supplement that, you know, to even uh, say how long. You know, it's going to carry us. You know, that's a concern. Also, I do have some of the programs that are in a minus. And I know some of them are, I don't know if there's still cost reimbursement. But you still have some that are really in big amounts. You know, and um. Yeah, we have our payroll also. Is that payroll?
Yeah.
Is that part of the I D C too?
Yeah, let me go through them for you.
All right.
I D C is a hundred and fifty seven thousand. We just got our our I H S I D C, so that will cover that. But. Payroll is next week. So we need to make sure that we're collecting all of our I D C. That twenty thousand we get from B I A doesn't cover payroll. So we have to make sure that we're collecting at the correct amount. Direct direct cost dollars, they they can't be used for salaries or equipment. So that doesn't. That's for other parts of the indirect cost. The core O N M, it's up to eight hundred and fifty six thousand. That is um. Some of that is. Is um. Whenever they do the draws, there's the operations, the O N M, and then there's the project dollars. And sometimes the project dollars are are coded to the. The. To the O N M when they should be coded to the project dollars. So we usually go through those and the accountant goes through and makes sure everything's recoded whenever this gets negative. And um, then if if it's actual O N M dollars, then they draw that down from. What's that bank in North Dakota? Anyway, I can't remember what it's called, but it's the bank in North Dakota. And. On the diabetes. They're negative seventy eight thousand. Remember, I told you that, yes, they had three hundred thousand, but we had to pay their bills. So all the bills are paid now. The only thing that is still recurring is the electricity. And and uh. I think it's just the old vehicle insurance. We have to figure out where we're going to pay that from because they're already in the negative. From the bills that we paid at the end of there when after they were closed. So we're most likely going to have to pay the utility bills from General Fund. Because we don't have a separate fund to cover the costs of a closed program. Distribution O N M is the same as Core O N M. They they double check the charges. Sometimes it's to project dollars. And then they do their drawdown.
Um, I thought those were separate accounts.
They are separate.
Okay.
There's a O N M account and the project accounts.
Yeah.
And then they just draw from there.
Yeah, distribution is on reservation.
Yep, and Core is the one in peer. Um, Economic Development, this two hundred and forty five thousand was supposed to be in the O Y A T we chose on E grant. It was written in there. To pay for some. Equipment for emergency management. And then after the grant was turned over to the we chose on E team or whatever they're called. Then that payment was denied. By them. Even though it was already written in the grant. So I I've been working with Steve to try and get him to pay us back. So he's trying to figure that out. So that way we can close that account since you guys don't have an Economic Development Office anymore. And then. Master Health. Master Health has two accounts. This first Master Health is the operating account. And their money, I don't understand why, but I H S sends their money to the second account. Then we have to transfer it over. To that first account. Sometimes they send their money to Parks and Rec. I don't know why. So then we have to get a resolution from you guys to get the money from Parks and Rec when they send it over there. We've asked them to correct it several times to come to this first account. Because that's their operating account. But they still send it to the first account or to Parks and Rec. I don't know. It's crazy. And then the next one, O S T Transportation. That one is actually transit. Transit and their accountant have been trying to balance everything. But she has so many different accounts for so many different things. Like her garage revenue, her transit revenue or the bus fare. Um, she has so many small grants. And they don't all go into the operations accounts. So then we have to go back. And she has to reconcile them and then do drawdowns. And because some of them are small, her some of her drawdowns are very small, like nine thousand, ten thousand. So that's usually dealt with between her and her accountant. Payroll is negative right now because of I D C. Because we have to pay. Pay payroll back for paying I D C's payroll. So once we get the drawdown from I H S, we'll be able to do that. And then. This state reimbursement slash four. That's for the Emergency Youth Shelter. We've been requesting money from every program that could possibly help the Emergency Youth Shelter. But they haven't received anything yet. While they have received something. It was fifty eight thousand. But um, Victims of Crime. Gave them thirty eight thousand. And then they bought they set them up an account for groceries, but they had to close that. Because of misuse. So we we need to, we still need to find someplace to pay that. Twenty thousand, she could fix it. By hiring a social worker. Under her grant, so they can start doing the reimbursements more. And writing her policies. I believe that there was um. Health admin or victims was helping her write. Her policies. I'm not sure where they're at on that right now, though. And I think that's it for the negative.
Hey, quite a question over here. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Besides the minus one negative accounts. I'm kind of concerned about the Prairie Winds. Accounts. And looking at the Prairie Wind Casino, we have uh, three uh, accounts. And we should always have a certain amount in that jackpot account. But then if you look at the other.
Honestly, Sonia, I don't think this part should be on the air.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm just concerned about it.
Yeah, I could bring that to Finance and let you guys discuss it there.
Get that there, but I'm just concerned about that.
Yeah.
And then on the other one is our store, O Y A T General Store. You know, is that all we have? Bringing in the balance?
It's. They actually um, average more per week. But that building is pretty old. And they've been having to do repairs. They had to replace water lines. They had to put electricity in. They had to seal that little building on the side. They have to um, right now they're working on air conditioning because they don't have air conditioning. And um. Most of their their money goes right back out to maintaining the building. But once they get that building. In better shape. There I I believe their average weekly is about thirty thousand. For deposit.
We own the um, O Y A T General Store in Ogallala. But we also own the Prairie Ranch Resort in Kyle.
Yeah.
And I see what their balance is right now. Does that cover the operating cost, the plus the payroll for those employees there?
Yes, but they've had bigger issues. Their walk-in freezer gave out. They had to buy a walk-in freezer. Walk-in freezer for a restaurant that size was about eighty thousand. Their fryer gave out. They had to buy a fry fryer. I think that was about eighteen. And then their grill gave out and that was about twenty. And I what they did there, I used the last of that L A T C F money that we had set aside to pay for those. But they have one more issue. And um, that's their drain field. That is going to need to be replaced soon. Because in the last two weeks, they've had two sewer backups.
One other. Store that we own is the Pass Creek, the Allen Store. But, you know, I think we were told that we only get rent. And that so whatever uh. The the management that is running it or the tribe, we never get a report as to what we're making. Out there. And I do know that um. Remember what term that was might have been killers administration, but we allowed to, we allowed for that to tap in. For them to manage the store. Not like how we did the O Y A T General Store and Prairie Ranch.
Yeah.
You know, we kept it under the tribe. So, you know, it'd be good to know what they're making. At uh, Pass Creek. At our store over there, not just them giving them us a monthly rent. How much is it we they they give us?
Twenty five hundred, not to us, to I Chaga.
Yeah, that's what I mean, goes to I Chaga.
Right. But that would take council action to actually bring that back to the tribe. If you wanted to have someone manage that and run it for the tribe. I think their agreement, though, was that. They could lease it, but they did all the upgrades to the building. So they put in all the countertops and the freezers and refrigerators and everything. So I don't know. What they would leave, what we would have to start over with. And I don't know when their lease is up because that was all done under I Chaga, not the tribe.
Councilwoman Spotted here.
Thank you. Good evening, Treasurer. I just have a couple of questions. When the tribe receives capital credit checks, is there a designation for where they are where those checks are deposited? When the tribe receives capital che- credit checks? Is there a designation for where those those checks get deposited?
All of the capital credit checks are supposed to be sent back to the tribe. To the Revenue Office. And then that goes back into the program that earned those capital credits.
So the program that doesn't receive them should be able to go to Revenue and do uh, be able to do like a paper trail?
Yeah.
And regarding our. Our Resource Office. I know we're coming to an end with our school applications. Our school closing application. Can we get a an update? For our our O Y A T who are listening as far as where we're at in the process with our checks? Um, for our off reservation, on reservation. Um, and is is there a backlog? How have they been getting issued? And also our our college students. I know that we've been referring them to the Resource Office, but. This past week, we found out that our tribal education also assists with our college students. So can we get a report to that as well?
Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Stephanie Cooney. I am the Assistant to the Treasurer. Um, and the O S T Resource Office here, um, we have eight hundred and seventy two applicants that are already processed on res. And we also have two hundred and eighty two off reservation applicants that were processed as well. So that makes a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty four tribal applicants for the children, for the youth. Uh, ranging from four years old all the way up to high school, senior and high school. Um, and so uh, the the O S T Resource Office staff um, are conducting. The one in Medicine Root, one in Pine Ridge, and they're focusing on fifteen hundred uh. Emails which are off res applicants. They're processing them now. The the and if you look at the data in the back. Um, here, the numbers are different with the data that we have on file. Um, we were kind of backed up there, but today uh, they started entering more data into the um, the system. Uh, majority of the the uh. Off and on school applicants are from White Clay. And um, Medicine Root will be having uh, their adjustments made this week. So they're bringing in, they brought in this week, they brought in today. Um, the Medicine Root applicants and they'll be ready for Friday, Friday's batch. Um, with Pine Ridge, okay, so the these are different numbers now as we uh, entered their data today. White Clay had four hundred and three youth, Pine Ridge had a hundred thirty seven youth, Wakabomni had eighty five youth. Pass Creek had thirty one youth, Wunditney had three youth, Lake Creek's a hundred and fourteen, Medicine Root, we had one. Uh, Porcupine today, it says zero, but when I looked at the system, we had eighty seven applicants. On Egoness, we also have sixty seven applicants. So it says zero on there, but as I um, they were entering, these are the numbers that were coming out. But it says zero on the report, so a total of seven hundred and seventy four. Um, a lot of the applicants we have off reservation. Um, we had processed from Wunditney, White Clay, Wakabomni, Pass Creek, Lake Creek and Pine Ridge. Um, on reservation is seventy five point seven percent that we had processed. And off reservation is twenty four point three percent. So it's balancing out, um, but again, total of one thousand one hundred and fifty four tribal youth, eight hundred seventy two on res. Two hundred eighty two off res. Again, that number will change next week because the data is still being entered. Um, with the with the um, the new. College students that are coming in, we are also referring, if we can't assist them, we are also referring them to C S B G. Um, and with that being said, they're assisting, but they don't have very much funds. So we've been trying to, we're going back and forth with each other on that one. Um, other than that, e- everything is going. We have on the report. That was printed out this morning. On reservation. We have seven hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars left. And with off reservation is five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars left. Um, and that number will drastically change after this week. Thank you.
So at this point, are you? Are you foreseeing that we will need an extension? Or would you prefer that we wait until you are caught up?
We wait until next week. We're almost caught up with the data entry. Um, we will not need a null extension. Um, because the the reason for that is because the funds are being expended. At a fast rate.
Thank you. And regards to LEAP, can you give an update to LEAP and when they can start expecting or accepting applications? And is it the same requirements as what it was previously?
The requirements had changed. Um, they went and lowered it as of yesterday. Um, they have a new application. Uh, that application will be coming out as soon as they change the date to twenty twenty five. Um, and they're accepting them now, but it'll begin October first. We do have funds available for LEAP. Thank you.
So is the office open for application now?
Yes, LEAP.
Thank you. They can email them to you as well if you want to pass them out to your district members.
For the the LEAP applications?
Yeah, or I could email one to Stacy and she can forward it.
I think that would be best. And also has our, well, I don't believe that would be a question for you, but. I believe our H R, our P R would be best utilizing this. To um, have access to our website to have those applications posted so we can get that information out there. Uh, I know that one of the concerns was a lot of our our folks do not have social media or do not use social media and they prefer our website. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sears.
Excuse me. Um, I guess I wasn't finished, but you guys went straight to the resource, but I still had questions for the Treasurer. Um, I just wanted to ask about. Um, I just wanted to ask about the um. The diabetes program. Is it possible for us to get a? Wait, no, wait till she's done. Is it possible, can we get a copy of the?